All right, we'll go back to meeting since one o'clock. We'll call the board of commissioners meeting in order. The records of all commissioners are present and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I didn't even have my mic on. Losing it today.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the business agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let's turn that. Somebody want to move the commissioner meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes from April 4th, 2023 and April 11th, 2023.
And I'll second.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for April 4th and April 11th, 2023. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Brings us to citizen comment. If any citizen has any comments that pertains to county business or anything residing inside the county and want to make the commissioners aware of it, this is your chance. You'll be given three minutes. Please give your name and general location for the record at the start of your testimony. And anybody in the room want to do citizen comment? Seeing none? So let's go online. Does anybody online have a citizen comment? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. This is citizen comment pertaining to anything that's not currently on our agenda like public hearings and whatnot. So, okay, I see a hand up from Culture Seed. Go ahead. Can't. There we go, I think.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, go ahead.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Yesenia Castro from Culture Seed, one of the co-executive directors here at Culture Seed located in White Salmon. Culture Seed, for those of you that don't know, is a small nonprofit whose work focuses in western Clickitat and Skimania counties. We offer free and ongoing outdoor immersion and mental health services to underserved youth. We start our programming at age 14 and then continue to offer services through high school and beyond. We serve youth who have multiple barriers to getting their needs met. Culture Seed currently is addressing systemic inequities and decentralizing and de-stigmatizing mental health so that it is more widely understood and cared for. We are currently connecting youth to a wide range of mental health resources as well as tackling rural isolation that has been worsened by COVID-19. We focus on increasing outdoor access in the gorge and diversifying the outdoors and the outdoor economy. Our services again are free and we do not have to bill insurance, so our team depends and works hard to get grants and partner with folks who have funds for mental health. We host community fundraisers and do all of the things that we can do to keep our services free. We currently have a longstanding partnership with the White Salmon Valley School District that has allowed us to use their space for youth therapy in groups and to recruit for our programs. We also have been partnering with Clickitat Health Department, who has been letting us reserve their conference room for free. We really focus on our mental health services following the person and not the location, which has often resulted in our options being limited to sometimes going on a walk on cold rainy days. And our brave youth deserve more than that. So today I am on here to request support in acquiring a centralized location that is easy to access, a space that our youth can come to in White Salmon. We would ideally share the space with partners in mental health. This includes our county crisis team, a recovery cafe, EST, Wintell, Skyline Hospital, North Shore, or any private therapist and friends across the river as well. We are requesting a space or wanting to be creative about imagining a welcoming space where anybody from our community can walk in and have their needs met. I'm also happy to meet with anybody and share more about Culture Seed's work and the vision that we have. So, yeah, that's it. Supporting and looking for space and creative partners to help us find space because right now we don't have one.
All right. Does that conclude your comment, ma'am? I'm going to take that as a yes if she muted herself. As I think you're new to the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners usually reserves time to address citizen comments at the end of the citizen comment period, which is usually around 1:20, 1:25. So if you're looking for comments back, hold on the line and you may or may not get them at 1:20, 1:25. With that, we'll go back online. Oh, we do have a hand in the room. I figured I would just eyeball up there before I go back online each time, so are the little green buttons lit up there? Perfect, name and general location for the record.
Kathy Moco-Goldendale. I would like to commend the commissioners and the sheriff's office for giving us such a safe, good place to live in the state of Washington. We don't have to worry about going out of our house or going to the store or going out at night. A friend today said, well, we went away for a week and my husband forgot to lock the front door and it happened, you know? Some examples, my granddaughter went out in Seattle the other night, a couple nights ago, from eight to 10, parked one of the other friend's mother's car and the car was broke, smashed and broken into. My sister lives in Seattle, goes to the store in a nice area. Everything in the store is behind a lock and key. And if you want to buy some shrimp, the man comes over and opens it and gives it to you because people steal everything, you know? And that's why we are so lucky here that we have a sheriff's office and police and everybody that doesn't let things like that happen. Anyway, thank you.
Comment, thank you, Ms. Moco. Okay, we'll go back online. I see Ruby with a hand up, name and general location for the record, please.
Ruby Irving, happily resident of Goldendale, Washington. And I just want to take a moment to point out that the discussion earlier with Republic Services really highlights the importance of having us always manager to discuss, you know, having tonnage amounts taken off. The discussion of a dollar fifty per ton off for a contract would have already been vetted and the research of necessity done long before the 11th hour, which is kind of where you guys are at. So I think your HR director is a great guy, but I don't think that he's qualified in order to direct you guys in the right direction when these matters come up. So hopefully you take a few minutes before you make that decision today so that you can make it with an educated decision. And that's all I got, and I can't stay on until the end, so I'm going to go and I hope you guys do good work.
Thank you, Ms. Irving. She can't stay on, does anybody want to answer now? I mean, granted, we are very limited on what we can answer you, so take that in mind if anybody wants to answer now.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Irving.
Thank you for your comment, and I guess you'll just have to see the commissioners' directions or what they're thinking later, since we can't really disclose right now. But let's just put it this way, we feel your concerns. All right, next up, online, anybody else online have your hand up, unmute yourself. Wave at us, start talking something. I do not see the regular CESE people on because they're probably doing their tour, so there should be a lot of citizen comment time available for anybody out there that wants it. I might have to just start randomly picking out names. Granted, 95% of them are county employees. Okay, we will just go about our business and start signing paperwork and whatnot, and if you have citizen comment, please raise your hand or get our attention somehow. And we will address you. Guess I probably shouldn't hum with my mic on, huh? We keep having riveting public comment like this, we're going to bore you away from us, huh?
We'll lose our bun.
That's the way it used to be. I used to sit in this room every week and it was just me and staff, there was no Zoom. And, yeah, you're three minutes, but then you got 27 minutes of nothing to talk about and it used to just be conversations back and forth. No, back then it was boring. Back then it was just standard boring, but then when Zoom showed up, then it got entertaining. Well, now it limits it, so technically if I give you three minutes and I give them three minutes and then I give you three more minutes, I got to give them back three more minutes because you got to keep everybody fair and equal down the board, otherwise you're taking somebody's First Amendment right away, so then it leaves all this dead air time because of that, so. We are still on citizen comment. If any members of the public online would like to give citizen comment to the Clickitat County Board of Commissioners, now is your chance. Unmute yourself, raise your hand. What are they, cats? They're just hanging out. Goldendale, the fact you only see two and not 40 is a good thing. Now, for my seatmates, I did email back Southwest Washington Home Builders and told them we had a workshop, so. I see a hand up. Ms. Arnold, you have citizen comment for us?
Yeah. I I think I'd like to suggest that you think of some way to turn this time into more of a conversation and less of a, you know, somebody says something and at the end of the meeting, the commissioners say what they think. There's really, you know, I comment a lot here off and on and in other forums as well, and it's unfortunate that it's never a dialogue. It's always like, okay, here's my comment and then, okay, here's why most of the time, like I'd say 95% of the time I make a comment, what I get back is here's why you're wrong, which isn't very productive and it does not encourage commenting. So I understand about having to allow kind of equal time and whatnot, but if you're getting to a point here for this 30 minutes where the volume of comments is down, maybe you could think about some way to have an actual conversation with some of the people who attend instead of the way it's structured now. So that'd be something I'd just put on your agenda to think about.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold, and I can agree with you that I wish we could go back to the old way where it was a conversation. Unfortunately, now we have sometimes before us an atmosphere that's combative, to say the least, argumentative. And we found when we were doing it the old way of having that conversation that we, the board lost control very fast. And so that's why it changed. Did it change for the better? For regular folks, the answer is no. Unfortunately, they're, I think, getting punished for the actions of the few. But did it tone down some of the hostilities? And some of the out of order comments and the gaveling from the chair? Yes, it did. So hopefully we can work towards going back to having conversations. Because that's the thing, when I sat here for two years, we did have conversations. They may have not always listened to what I had to say. So I feel your pain there, but at least it was a conversation. So thank you. Any other citizen comments online for the Board of County Commissioners today? They said the majority of the commenters, I think, are off on their tours, so I figured today would be kind of slow. Kind of feeling bad. The point that Pat just made about, and most of the time our answers are, and here's why you're wrong. I guess I've never felt like that was what I was portraying. If, you know, that was me, I'm just going to assume everything's me because I can't speak for you guys. But just to let her know that that hit me. So at least I myself will be trying to do better to make sure that I'm not answering questions with, make somebody feel like they're wrong in their statement, because nobody's ever wrong, even if there's two different opinions. Both opinions are right, they're just different. So if we made you feel that way, I have to apologize for the board. With that, we will go on to any other citizen comment in the room or online that has comments for the Board of County Commissioners today? Any answers, my seatmates, or comments, or might as well use the time productively unless the citizens don't want it? Not that there's a lot of response to give, but do either of you have anything?
I would say thank you, Kathy, for the positive statements. We like, love hearing those. And with Ms. Castro and Culture Seed, thank you for working with our Behavioral and Public Health Department. We are looking for that exact thing in the White Salmon area for their new behavioral health program as it expands. And I thought that I'd heard that Culture Seed had secured some property or some area in the community center or the old, the old, old school in White Salmon. So I'm going to look more into that because that's, we've been looking at that space for quite a different few projects. And with Pat, yes, it's not as much of a back and forth as it used to be. And usually we're busy the whole 25 minutes and we don't have a whole bunch of extra time. Today is, of course, the first most beautiful day of the year, and if I had a choice, I wouldn't be sitting here either, giving public comment. But you do have my phone number and you are welcome to call me anytime to have a conversation, a back and forth conversation. So thank you as always for taking the time. And just so you know, I received your email that you sent earlier today as well, so, and thank you to all of our commenters.
Is there anything?
I don't today. Jake thanked everybody just as I would have.
Yeah, I agree. And I will point out also, like Jake said, you know, feel free to call or email them anytime. My phone and email is always open to anybody out there listening. You know, people I don't even know off the internet, you know, wish I could buy a cup of coffee and pick your brain, all you got to do is email me or call me or do something to set up a time. And I will go meet with you or your group whenever you want me to, so always open and available, just need to know where I'm going. And it sounds like my seatmates are the same way. So we're trying to, we're trying to shift things around in the county. We're trying to be more open, we're trying to be more transparent, we're trying to give the Zoom option, which we no longer legally allowed to do or no longer legally required to do. We're trying to record them so everybody can watch them later. We're trying to be out in the communities more so that people can see us and pick our brain, so we're trying, and if we're not there yet, no, we're working on it. With that, I think I've already addressed everybody else on the list. And always thanks Kathy for her positive comments that help on otherwise dull days or non-bright days. Any other citizen comments before we go? We still have a few minutes left. Not seeing any. Yeah, I do know as far as the times like this where it's just dead air, and we've had this conversation in the county as well, a lot of counties do not set aside half an hour for citizen comment. They set aside up to half an hour for citizen comment. So when they call citizen comment and nobody responds, they just close, or when the last person responds, they just close citizen comment, move on to their agenda and everything else to continue their productive work schedule. We are kind of the exception in the state that keeps a certain block of time open, but then again, this county has always provided public comment even when it wasn't mandated or required by the state. So I think this county has always gone over and above, above and beyond to make sure that they can hear from the public and we're trying to do the same. And as you can tell, I'm just killing two minutes of airspace before we can move on unless one of you wants to come online and give us some citizen comment.
I guess while we have a couple of minutes, we did receive an email from Ms. Bosque asking us about RCW 367795 and asking if we would change to include a separate document for our findings of fact. I responded to her letting her know that that though what we had written are our findings of fact, and it says that much, and it also says that an emergency exists within the wherewithal. And so we've met our statutory obligation. Just wanted to make sure you guys knew that I responded back. I didn't know if you had.
Yeah, I kind of sent one back that was kind of the same, that kind of just says that we may have a difference of what, difference of opinion of what the findings of fact was or how it needed to be officially done, that each commissioner gave their findings of fact when we had the moratorium hearing and each listed our reasons for why we were what we were. Those are all part of the official record to go along with the official document at the end. I don't know that that will close this case on this issue. But I did answer as well as you with pretty much the same, same comments, so.
I hadn't answered her, but I did a word search, a legal word search, and findings of fact are your product and the conclusions are your statements out of that product. So I think we've covered ourselves with, we did do our findings of facts, but then our conclusions are conclusion of what came out of those finding of facts. We did do our findings of facts, but then our conclusions are conclusion of what came out of those finding of facts.
Right. As I said, I think there's just a difference of opinion. They would like to have seen it done. With more paperwork. And then we did, but. Yeah. Okay, it's 1:30. Time to move on to public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. Right now, we have a public meeting to consider requests for an additional 90-day extension to complete all conditions of an approval of a short plaid SPL 2021-11. On parcel number 05-19-0900-0008/00, which is located in the Golden Day vicinity. For the Dumonts. Staff update, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a request for an additional 90-day extension to complete all conditions of approval for short plaid 2021-11. Applicants John and Ariana Dumont. The Clickitack County subdivision in short plaid ordinance 122082 allows for one year from preliminary approval to submit all conditions required and obtain final approval. An additional one-year extension can be granted if requested by the applicant. A provision for any extension beyond that is not included in the above ordinance. The applicant requested and was granted a one-year extension by the planning department on March 28, 2022. This extension moved the plaid expiration date from April 28, 22 to April 28, 23. The applicant has again asked for an additional extension due to unforeseen complications. If the board finds, feels that an extension is warranted, the board will need to make a motion to grant a 90-day extension, extending the current deadline to July 28, 2023, for short plaid SPL 2021-11.
Any discussion, questions, or anything by my seatmates?
And you took this by the prosecuting attorney's office?
No. We have done this before.
We have done it in the past. Okay.
The last one, I think it was due to COVID delays. We don't have it. It doesn't give us an option for a second extension in the ordinance, so we bring it to you to see if you're.
So the first extension is administrative?
Yes.
I have no concerns.
I have no concerns.
I have no concerns either.
I would hate to have them have to apply again and pay all the fees and everything. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. To extend the. Approval of short plaid SPL 2021-11 with the applicants John and Ariana Dumont for 90 days.
And I'll second.
Here we have a motion to second. To extend SPL 2021-11 for 90 days. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of extension, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on, we are now going to move into a public hearing to consider the, consider the approval of shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit. SH 2022-03 for the Pitt Trailhead project on the Clickitack. You want to give a brief staff update briefly before we move into the hearing, or?
Sure. I do have a last minute. Comment from the Friends of the White Salmon River. Do you guys have that?
We did receive it via email. I haven't had a chance to read it. Have my seatmates have a chance to read it? We've all had a chance to read it. Thank you.
Okay, this shoreline conditional use and substantial development permit proposal, SH 202203, only involves approving the existing pit site trailhead located in the vicinity of Clickitack, Washington, at the junction of SR 142 and Fishon Road. The applicant is Washington State Parks. Conditional uses that are set forth in the local master program may be authorized, provided the applicant can demonstrate all of the following per WAC 17327160. One, the proposed use is consistent with the Shoreline Management Act and the policies of the Clickitack County Shoreline's master plan. Two, the proposed use will not interfere with the normal public use of public shorelines. Three, the proposed use of the site and design of a project will be compatible with other permitted uses within the area. Four, the proposal will cause no unreasonably adverse effects to shoreline environment designation in which it is to be located. And five, the public interest suffers no substantial detrimental effect. On February 21st, the planning commission recommended approval of SH 202203. The Board of County Commissioners reviewed the planning commission's recommendation during their public meeting on March 21st. The meeting resulted in the board's decision to have their own hearing in order to further address their concerns regarding how the project affects the public's interest. This is that hearing. As the last step in the local approval process, the board may decide to approve or deny SH 202203. The board's decision will then be forwarded to the Department of Ecology for final review and approval. That concludes my staff review.
Thank you. I guess I probably should have already had the discussion about disclosing ex parte contact, of which I had none. I'm assuming Commissioner Joler is still gonna recuse herself from this.
Yes.
Okay, just for the record. And Commissioner Anderson has not stated he has had any, so we will move on to applicant's additional testimony. Is the applicant or State Parks online and wish to give any additional testimony? To the Board of Commissioners today?
No additional, good morning, or good afternoon. This is Brian Patno from Washington State Parks. No additional testimony other than the responses to the comments and concerns we heard at the last commissioner meeting. That we submitted in writing or included with your staff packet. I think everyone, everyone understands what's being proposed. If not, I can go through the, the components or the, the program elements of the, of the improvements, whichever. You prefer.
I, I, we did see the comments in the packet, and I do appreciate you addressing the ones that you did address. I would ask my seatmate, I do not need a full update on this, and if he needs a full update, we will, or do you not need a full update? Read the whole packet, yep.
Okay, well, let me know if you want me to go through or provide any clarity on. The improvements. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will go on to proponents' testimony, or anybody looking to testify in favor. Of placing this project that is not the applicant. Any, any citizens want to go on record as being in favor of this project and provide testimony to the Board of Commissioners? Last call for any citizen proponents that want to go on record as in favor of this. Development. Okay, seeing none. We will go to opponents. Any opponents' testimony, anyone that wants to go on record as opposed to the test, or as opposed to this project on the Pitt Trailhead? Okay. I'm seeing none there as well, other than the one on the record that we did receive via email that was more of a neutral. Okay. No need for.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We do have some.
I'm sorry. I, I had a challenge with my mute. My name's Devin Hops. I am property owner on Fishon Road, and I would like to make a statement in opposition to this plan.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, would it be possible to share my screen?
Sure.
I'll do, okay.
Should I have a share screen button on the bottom of your? Zoom.
Yep. Okay. Folks, see what I'm sharing?
I see it said you've shared your screen, but I'm still looking at a Zoom meeting. There's a map.
Okay, let me see.
There's a map of the.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, we have that.
Okay, great. So this is your before picture. As you can see, this is mostly a gravel paved area. It has fairly substantial parking there already. In our experience there, in the 11, almost 12 years that we've lived there, we've never seen that parking area full. The area is fairly flat. Sure, it's pretty good parking, and does not seem to provide, present any access issues for the current use of the trailhead. I just wanna, I want to be clear that what we're looking at here is, is a, is a fairly good fit for how the trail is used. This is our proposed plan. As you'll see, this is a large surface area of asphalt that is covering much more than what was previously a. A dirt road permeable surface. And as you'll also see. The edge of this development extends right up to the edge of the 50-foot line for where Parks has drawn their observable high water line. So this is a big change. This is a big asphalt parking lot on a small parcel. Now, in the Clickitack Planning Commission meeting, Parks went at length to. To describe the area that this big parking lot is being put into as disturbed. And the vegetation was characterized as shrubby or stunted dairy oak. And. In Parks' estimation, it did not have a substantial impact on the, on important habitat in the area. Now, I'd like to demonstrate to you folks today that that is not the case, that this actually has a substantial impact on. Significant habitat area. Now, to start off. I'm gonna provide a statement that Parks actually made themselves. In their CIPA checklist. It says, based on analysis of the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife's priority habitat and species GIS records.
Sir?
Oregon white, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but our comment is usually three minutes. Now, unfortunately, I forgot to tell you that. So you had no idea, no way to know. So with that, I'm going to use chairman's prerogative, give you two more minutes. And then we will also give the proponent of this project the same time to rebut. So you have two more minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Okay, so. First point is that Parks themselves have identified this as Oregon white oak woodland that is Washington State High Priority Habitat for Conservation. Washington Fish and Wildlife has identified this area as habitat for the western gray squirrel. This species is identified as the species of greatest conservation need under the State Wildlife Action Plan. Now, while Parks may have indicated that this area is a disturbed area with little ecological value, you're looking at one of the trees in their tree removal plan. As you can see, that is a very mature, very large oak tree that provides, that would provide substantial habitat to the gray squirrel. There are quite a few other trees in the area. That are similarly large, mature, slow-growing oak trees, and these trees are slated for removal. So Parks is not following through on their commitment to preserve this. Important habitat for a threatened species. So. I think that's the gist of my comments here. That spot hasn't been disturbed for over 200 years. There's an oak tree growing there that's older than anyone in this meeting. And for Parks to claim that this is somehow a disturbed area that has little habitat value is not the case. Thank you for letting me show these pictures, and I hope you come to the decision that this is not in the public interest of the Clickitack County.
Thank you, sir. Your time has ended. Then I'm resetting my clock. With that, now is the time for, well, I guess I'll go one more call for opponents' testimony. Anyone wishing to oppose, or oppose this project that has citizen comment, please come forward now. Or we close citizen comment? Yep. All right, now, once again, I'm not seeing none, so we will move on, and now is the time for applicant's rebuttal. The applicant will have a chance to rebut or clarify any comments or statements made by the general public. Sir, this is where I will extend your time for two minutes to be fair and equal with the testimony provided, and you will have five minutes, up to five minutes if you need them. Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks for the comments, Devin. The, we are taking out nine trees. Nine oak trees, to be exact. We are, do plan to. Restore and renovate the, the vegetation on this site, or particular areas that are disturbed. So we'll be replacing in kind the oaks that are removed. But to, to get to the, the gist of the concern. Western gray squirrel habitat is priority. That site is over, I think it's 90 acres, so we're preserving a large portion of that. Unfortunately, the development above us took out a majority of the oak habitat that had the nests, but we are. Like I mentioned, we're not required to do that. There are no nests in those trees that we're removing, and there are none within, I'd have to check the. The distance and, and with our stewardship, but even, even. I'm not even sure we have any nests on that property. So, I guess, I just want to clarify that we are removing trees, but the, the vegetation that we replace will. Be better than what is there. It is previously disturbed. It was an old homestead. It's gone feral, or I guess that's fallow, I should say, is the word I'm looking for. So it's kind of hard to tell, and that, that big oak, it is a big one, and I. We showed it as being removed because we weren't sure we can save it, but I think that we probably can. We're gonna try to save it, adjust the road a little bit, and see if we can move it out, so we can get that, keep that big one, because it is a, it is a beauty, for sure. So, like I mentioned before, we're doing whatever we can to protect and enhance the site. But unfortunately, in order to get the circulation in there, and, and to improve the look of that corridor and the safety, and provide a few extra parking spots, we do have to take out a couple of trees. And. Before I finish, I just want to give Chelsea a couple of minutes. Chelsea Harris, our environmental planners on the line here, too, to make sure I got that right, or if she has any clarifications to what I just stated there. Chelsea?
Yeah, you, you nailed it, Brian. And. Just for reference for everyone, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife has reviewed our proposal, and they have provided the necessary reviews and permitting for this project. So everyone is on the same page, and our CIPA checklist certainly reflects accurate, on-the-ground conditions, which is, you know, what, what our responsibility is. So, other than that, Brian nailed it right on the head.
Thanks, Chelsea. I don't have any further comments or rebuttals or clarifications. I might, I might time something anyway. So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we will call the public portion of this hearing closed. Now is the time for the board to ask questions of staff, the applicant, or others if it has any questions. So I would ask if my seatmate has any further questions that he needs.
No.
I do not either. Now is the time for the board to have discussion before it makes a motion. If it needs discussion or wants discussion. I would ask my seatmate if he has things he would like to discuss, or.
No, I was, I was clear when we, I decided to vote for the hearings to give you more time to get your questions answered.
Well, for me, I guess, as we move, going into the motion, I just wanted, I prepared a statement that I was actually looking for testimony today that might change some of this statement. I did not hear any. So this is still where I stand on the issue, and that is, this is a rustic area. The public seems to want to keep it rustic. There is no testimony to the planning commissioner, the board of commissioners from the public that's in favor of this parking lot. Another concern is on the question that State Parks answered in number six, what is existing versus proposed traffic data? And they said that we do not have traffic data for the pit trailhead. We do not expect significant changes giving the existing parking lots availability on pit on both sides of the highway. My concerns there is with fourteen parking spots and three horse trailers proposed. I don't see why the state would build a parking lot this large when the locals see two or three cars a day. Unless they actually forecast more use. And if they're forecasting more use, that can conflict with the public's interests. I myself see increased use. I see increased use by drivers going north and crossing southbound traffic on a semi-blind corner. This causes me concerns of driver's safety. Creating this parking lot will unwillingly encourage river users to park in the lot and cross the state highway with no crosswalk or raised crossover. Short, shortcuts in planning, in proper planning like this, in my opinion, increase risk to local residents and can cost lives. The state's answer to are there plans to remove animal waste was, and I'll quote again, there will be a pet waste station. That's it, end quote. No mention of how they plan to remove the horse dung from the roadway that the residents will have to drive through. I also have concerns about encouraging bike riding, dog walking, and equestrian use on the same trail. Because I think that is inviting conflict and a public safety issue. We all know you can't speed next to horses. We all know you can't have your dogs running loose next to horses. Unfortunately, we live in the country, and we know that city folk don't know that, and they're the ones that are gonna be using this trail. I believe there needed to be better, larger siding, telling the users of the trail that they can't leave the ballast or it's trespassing. I have concerns that there's no water for the horses at the trailhead, and I think that's gonna invite the horses to trespass on neighbors' properties to get to the water. And in doing so, in anywhere they're getting to the water, they are going to be trampling the repairing area, causing bank erosion, whether that's on State Parks property or on a neighbor's property. With all those things, I personally find this parking lot is absolutely harmful to the local residents. And that the public interest absolutely suffers substantial detrimental effect. So it would be my recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners to deny this application.
Well, being that there's only two of us that can vote on this, and it doesn't sound like anything's going to sway your mind. I guess you're gonna need to step down to make a motion to deny the substantial development permit.
All righty, I'll step down as chairman. I move that we deny shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit SH two zero two two dash zero three, thereby forwarding to the Department of Ecology for final decision for the reasons I stated above.
I will second the motion for discussion. While I understand your concerns, I also think about the Clickatap Trail and the plans that State Parks has for increasing the use of that trail and improvements throughout that trail system that they have discussed, planned, worked with stakeholders, tribes for years. And I think you could go down right now to Catherine Creek, you can go to Coyote Wall, you can go all over the gorge, and you can see how busy it is even on a workday like this. And I applaud State Parks for looking into the future, for trying to plan and design parking features that meet state and ADA standards where currently none exist at that site. And I applaud them for thinking out twenty to thirty years on what tourism will likely look like through that area and trying to plan for it. I would be in favor of approving this substantial development permit, even though I may not agree with the exact location. I think State Parks has provided ample evidence of their planning, their intention, and their processes for moving forward with this. I know that the State Parks takes anything within the shoreline very seriously when they do their designs. I think they've, are attempting to enhance the recreational opportunities for our equestrian community, and I applaud them for that as well. And I hate to say it, but I have seen many instances throughout my years where bicyclists, horses, and walkers can all co-mingle and be on the same road area. I see more issues when horses are walking next to vehicles than I do with bicycles. And I have many of those trails right next to my own property. And we have gotten along just fine over the years. With that, I can't vote in favor of your motion, sir. But I think that this, this is going to die as we cannot meet a majority.
So I have a last staff. Is this, I mean, does Ecology have final say on this, even if we can't get to an agreement? Or is this dead right here, and you don't need my remarks to submit to Ecology as denied? Or you don't know?
That's a good question. Typically, you approve it, prove it with conditions or deny it, and Ecology has the final review. They've got thirty days to make their decision. I don't know.
I don't want to put you on the spot right now. How about this? How about we've, we've not made a motion to approve, and we've not made a motion to deny, so this is essentially dead in this chamber. The question is, where do we go from here? And we'll give you some time to figure that one out. And we'll let you come forward and take my statement of my concerns. In case it does go to Ecology, that can be forwarded on with it. Okay. And then, yeah, keep us notified what you find out on how we go from here with the no yes vote and no no vote.
Will do. I didn't research that option, didn't.
Because it shouldn't weigh in on our findings, so, or in our opinion, so, okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I know this may have caused some hard feelings on all sides. We're all doing what we think is best. Even the commissioners, we disagree, but we all think we are doing what is best versus. So moving on. Two o'clock, perfect, two o'clock. Department update with Natural Resources Economic Development Director Dave McClure. Department update, please come forward with whoever you want to bring with you, sir. Look at this. We get good news today?
I think so. Good afternoon, commissioners.
I was not expecting any good news today.
Great news.
Dave McClure, Director, Natural Resources Economic Development, and I have with me Lorena Lowell with the Washington Small Business Development Center. And she's got a bit of an update, a quarterly update on what's been happening with her office here locally.
Right, thank you. So just so quickly, you know, I'm just gonna give you the, just a quick snapshot, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. So this first quarter, we served thirty clients. Richard is asking me to give him like a ballpark where there are located. Ten are in Goldendale from those thirty, and twenty are between White Salmon and Vingeon. The capital infusion, meaning secure funds, it's nobody's outing loans, but secure, and we do the refinance, so we have new money coming into these businesses, it's half a million. Job supported between all of them, meaning retaining them, or having adding some new jobs are sixty-four. New businesses, four, and the reported revenue is three hundred thousand dollars. And that's really low because a lot of the clients that we have do not do report the first quarter because they're doing taxes. So that is, so let me tell you a little bit about what is happening and like we discussed at the end of last year. So basically, what we're working on is a lot of reorganization and looking at the companies and the clients that we have and making sure that they're more efficient. Trying to figure out if we can do some refinancing. The interest rate is extremely high everywhere. So I do not see, I don't, I guess my guess is now we're not gonna see a lot of money, a lot of loans this year. I actually do not even recommend it unless, unless we're consolidating that. What we're seeing is, what we discussed before, is the idle loans, you know, three loans. And now we're seeing again credit card debt. And that credit card debt in some of the small businesses is how their financing concerns me. So what we're trying to do is, if we have a twenty-three, if we have a twenty-three percent credit card debt, and we have loans at ten percent, might as well go back to the ten percent versus the twenty-three. So, you know, I am very, very concerned about these scenarios. Brings me back to two thousand and eight. I don't want to be pessimistic, and I don't want to scare anybody, but really seeing that debt, the ratio, and how people need to finance, it's concerning.
How are you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you seeing this problem on multimillion-dollar businesses, or is this just mom and pops financial troubles?
It is not the mid, it's small to medium size. I mean, not, not a very, very small one. So we are looking at the, at the people that are operating, you know, the restaurants that we have in town, the, in all over the county. If we're talking about companies bigger than fifty employees, and you know that they have millions of dollars in revenue, I'm not concerned about them. That's a different, that we're talking about different ballgames. And as I spoke before, we have the high-end businesses, and they actually are stable, and they have more financial tools than, you know, like the restaurants here, that they're trying to open, and they're trying to sustain, and they're investing, and they're working the businesses. Those are the ones that they are paying with credit cards. So the good news is that we're seeing some activity in the small businesses. They are not completely shut down or dead. As a matter of fact, you may be aware then through the grants of commerce, there was about three hundred thousand dollars, and having invested in this county from commerce to provide high, very, very high-end training in the community. And there are three, there are four weeks of three days training, then they started two weeks ago. Or in the third week, we have two more weeks to go, or five weeks. And when I said high-end, I mean, some of these trainers are being paid twenty-five thousand dollars to come to Goldendale. The trainings are being done here by the chamber, they are organized by the Chamber of Commerce. And the good news about it is that we're recruiting a lot of new clients. Last, between the last two weeks, we recruited sixteen new clients. All are active, all are, you know, doing business. Some of them, some people are starting. We have medical practice, and he's trying to relocate to another location. So we're working here, I'm talking Goldendale right now only, because I know interested what's happening here. So we have one relocation, then my involved purchasing a property and some expansion, blah, blah, blah. We have a new client that has not been able to find any real estate retail space to operate, so we're working with them, trying to figure out some space in downtown. We have a restaurant that is doing great, that is looking to expand really fast. So we're back to the childcare with another proposal that we're gonna be reviewing next week with another group of people. It's a different scenario. So it has been very, very active through the presentations and these trainings. And the good thing about these trainings are bringing, for example, this week, we have something that is called Profit Mastery, and I am required to take. It is an extremely expensive and high-end training in finances, and there are about sixteen people taking the class this week. Last week, we have service industry, somebody from our network came and did the training for restaurants and hotels. So that's, I mean, I'm going fast. That's basically what's going on in the community. We have one, I got one new client, and I didn't even know that was in the county, it's not located in Goldendale. But we are actually gonna start looking and trying to secure some funds from the SBA export. They're ready to export, they're already producing in China, and they already are selling in Germany and in England, and they were contacted just through, via email, on their, on their online shop. I was not aware of that, so I work, I'm working with them a lot on that. I have another client that is local here, and they're, we're packaging something ready to kind of, they're already producing in Mexico, and they have some connections through a show that they did, and they're looking into Australia and another two vendors overseas. So that's a surprise for me. One is in Goldendale, the other one is in Vingeon. So that's where we are.
Yeah, I think you're gonna be surprised as you go through this, as people start popping up, and we're like, God, we didn't even know they existed. But it's good to get them in a binder. So that if there's something we have later that can offer them, we know who to offer to, so no, that's gonna do.
Exactly. The challenge is to make sure that they don't come to us when they're at, because the economic climate that we have right now, I just hope they don't come to me when they have like sixty, seventy thousand dollars in that in credit card.
Well, that's the kicker.
Because that's gonna be, I mean, one of the clients that I have, they're paying seven hundred dollar credit cards, and it's like, let's not do that, because we cannot refinance that.
If you, unfortunately, in this interest rate, I think we're gonna weed out financially sound, financially managed companies versus those that aren't. So, yeah. Questions, comments?
Any questions?
What are you hearing from all the businesses that are now paying back the EIDL loans that we had fifty-plus million? I think is what you said last time.
Right.
Are you, is that, are you hearing that people are having a really tough time making those payments? Are they, and what do you see happening?
They're, at this point, they're taking the advantage of the extension, which the only thing it's doing is adding interest to the bill. It's gonna be, I mean, I had a presentation with the commissioners at the other counties, it's gonna be a bumpy road. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, it's gonna be a bumpy road. I mean, I already have three that are probably not gonna make it. And those ones are the hard ones, because that's, as, as we discussed before, idle loans, depending on the amount, are basically personal guarantee. And IRS is collecting the money, so those ones are gonna be hard to maneuver. And the challenge with those is, I had one client that's probably the one that is concerning me the most. Then was not my client at the time, then decided to sell the assets, and that's a big no-no. So decided to sell the assets, gonna keep surviving, and now it's gonna be a mess. Because those assets cannot be sold and cannot be used. So, you know, as people are trying to come up with solutions, which, you know, totally understandable, right? There's like, we have to feed our families, but those kind of solutions with IRS involve unfilled funds that are not gonna unfailed funds that are not gonna be easy to maneuver, especially selling assets.
Yeah, I have a feeling that a lot of people took those loans, thinking they were going to never have to pay them back, that the federal government was going to, oh, it's like college debt, we're gonna forgive it.
Right.
And a lot of people took them, never knowing, and now they're, they're gonna have some harsh problems.
Right, we're over thirty-four billion dollars in interest, and haven't been paid, unpaid, not paid nationwide, so.
I said, I think we all saw it coming from day one, before anybody even got the thing.
At least that, at least that money's at a lower interest rate than any loan you can get right now.
Correct, it's just accumulation of the interest, right? By, I mean, we have three years of interest, of the interest, of the interest, at three percent, we are about the same.
Well, I think the ones that were in good financial shape beforehand, I mean, not me and my business, I almost did one, not because I needed it, but because it was such a good interest rate, I was thinking, I might just lock up some credit for thirty years, and just not use it until, you know, five years from now, if I need a boat or something, you know? But I'm like, no, I mean, I don't, you know, no.
How long is their extensions?
We're in six months right now, so they did the first round in six months. My guess is they're gonna, I mean, I gotta be careful with my words, because part of this is my opinion, and the other one is, you know, I think then if extensions don't happen, something is gonna crash, and that's my personal opinion, as of, you know? So, my personal opinion is that we're gonna probably see more extensions, and I also see, or I also feel and think, excuse me, that at some point, there's gonna be a valuation of the sizes of the loans, and potentially different options. I mean, we have a two, three million dollars loans versus like a twenty million, twenty thousand dollars loans. It's probably gonna be, I'm not, they're not gonna be forgivable, that's clear, they're gonna be paid, that's clear, it is not gonna change. But I think then with the people that are in the twenties to fifty thousands, may do something differently, you know, other kind of extensions, that the ones that, you know, concern me the most is the businesses, the bulk of the businesses, and they're in the hundreds, between a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. Those ones are the ones that in thirty years, is over half a million dollars with a balloon payment at the end. And if they are on the forties, we're talking about in their seventies, early eighties, paying a balloon payment, then he's gonna take the house.
And their, yeah, their personal assets.
It's a personal, it's a personal asset, this, the first two layers are, all of them are personal, I mean, personal guarantee.
Socialism grant, here, have some free money, it doesn't hurt.
Right, so, common, the good side is Commerce has been releasing funds on enough, you know, the short period of times, but there's some grants coming and going, and then it's kinda helping to relieve some of that. But, you know, I just, I'm concerned, and the more money comes in, it's just more fresh money, and it's not, I mean, debt needs to start getting paid, so hopefully, we can start helping more businesses to kinda reorganize their finances and find a path, a financial path, and can help them out to balance this out.
It started as good news, and then it changed.
How many of those are in our county, estimate number-wise?
So, in our county, we have twelve million dollars out on idle loans.
How many specific businesses?
I do not know that, because that's the, the amount is what was lent from SBA, and some of them are my clients, but not all of them, so I do not know that.
Okay.
Twelve million, you said?
Twelve million.
Well, it's better than what I thought it was.
Yeah, me too.
Without interest.
And it's, is it four-two-five or three-seven-five?
Pardon me?
Interest rate is it four-two-five or three-seven-five?
Four, four-seventy-five, you know what, I need to get back with you, I, I don't remember exactly.
I don't remember either, I just remember it seemed pretty reasonable at the time.
It was between three-seventy-five and four-twenty-five, it's around there, but I forgot the, this is the exact rate. Any other questions?
I don't have any, try to keep us on time here, so it is two fifteen?
It was three-seven-five.
And Steph?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, good to see you all, have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
It didn't have a balloon painted, though.
Oh, wow.
No, I meant to drive by it yesterday, and I didn't do it.
Good.
So, this is a picture of, I'll show you as well, they're boss man. So, this is a picture of the incubator spaces being built down there at the, at the industrial park, right ahead, already indicated that we're doing the Small Business Innovation Fund Grant Program, that's with the Chambers, I believe that's where Chelsea's at right now, with the Profit Mastery, that's occurring. We're attending, we're attending all the events in support of that, and that was broken down, there was a one-point-one million dollar grant that we got from the Department of Commerce. Right off the top, just for your situational awareness, we're anticipating a point oh-nine request from the city of Bingen at our next KCPA meeting on May second. And currently, I'm working with the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport.
You gonna tell us what the request is?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Just hey, goodbye.
Yeah, it's coming down the pipeline.
Just give us a quarter million.
A waterline extension, and it's supposed to do a small housing development, as well as a, like a, for commercial purposes as well, there's gonna be multiple parts to that waterline extension.
Cost or ask?
We're not exactly certain, but I would, I would anticipate around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I guess. I've, we haven't gotten that far yet.
You gave me a basic ballpark, that's.
Are they, are they going to present an application, or are they just gonna present the concept, and are they looking for a recommendation out of the board at the next meeting, do you know?
I believe they're gonna be looking at a recommendation, so I believe there's gonna be an ask. So, with the regional airport, I'm currently working with the Community Aviation and Revitalization Board out of the Department of Commerce for what a loan might look like for the airport in regards to the architectural and engineering costs associated with the, with the phase two of the infrastructure, as well as the new hangar space for the workforce development project with the Columbia Gorge Community College. We're still running through numbers and stuff like that. I've already spoken about Goldendale.
Oh, just, correct, so, so this car loan is, is a backup in case the congressional spending ask doesn't work.
Yeah, so, if, thank you for reminding me about that. So, previously, we put in an earmark request about a month ago. We're not gonna find out till August or September whether or not that is gonna be approved, and so in the meantime, we're looking at what this might look like. If this is, if this is a viable option, we're looking at it applying for late June, early July, getting it approved and everything like that, with all the contracts signed by September, October, in which case, we would use that as a match for the federal investment, the Federal EDA Investment Review Committee. Our loan would be five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, which is a twenty-two percent match for the amount of shortfall that we're experiencing down there for that project. So, the, our ask from the Investment Review Committee would be one-point-eight-five million dollars, that, so they would be funding it at eighty percent. So, but we're still working on what all the numbers of that would look like, and for the loan, who, who we could have serviced the loan. There's a couple of ideas on how we could get that serviced without impacting the county budget, so currently still working that piece, if that makes sense. For business retention and expansion, workforce development, we have an SRF, a state revolving fund loan, or not loan, a state revolving funds workforce development grant request, it's for forty-one thousand dollars. We're gonna be training up thirty-nine employees from two aerospace companies on the West End. We have our last cohort of the scale-up program, I'm not sure what the numbers are for the first cohort, but we've been advertising that through the Chambers.
I could jump in for just a second, on that SRF loan for the training, Chelsea's been working with you, Richard's been working with Chelsea, sort of training how that grant program works, and she's putting in the application, so let's get onboarding her with that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I've been training up Chelsea, she's been doing a killer job for the next few projects, is actually what, what she's been working on. She's also got the job fair that's going on right now, so that's May tenth, from two to three PM. Our HR department's also gonna be in attendance, along with seven businesses, is being advertised at the schools. Right now, we have a commitment from Glenwood. This, this is gonna be taking place at the Goldendale High School, so we have Goldendale and Glenwood. And we're still waiting on some transportation, they're, they're trying to work some transportation out from Lyle and Trout Lake, what that might look like, and we have reached out, we do have a union rep that's gonna be attending from Union Three-Three-Five Laborers, they're also gonna be in attendance. Moving forward, we have two different projects, two different efforts from broadband. The first one's with the Washington Department of Commerce, this one's sponsored by Rapid Design Study, it's, or that's the program name, it's a feasibility study, and is being performed by Breaking Point Solutions. It's currently underway, they've tentatively ID'd, identified some areas of interest and greatest need, and they currently have an interactive map showing the different speeds across Clickat County on their website. And then we're still working with WSU for the WSU Extension Program for that, and that's gonna be along with Kerry over at McKed. And the, where we're at in the process for that right now is, we're currently trying to gather some data, and as well as build out information on what that's gonna look like. And then last, but certainly not least, Clickat Pat Mill site, so since our last update, we had that work, that group, that workgroup session, I believe, May sixteenth, here, here with, with everyone. Our next meeting is gonna be on May fifteenth, and that's gonna be with Mid-Columbia Fisheries, Yakima Nation Fisheries and Ecology, and that's gonna be in regards to what the, what the creek restoration for Snyder Creek is gonna look like, and the discussion's gonna be on the constraints and the potential liabilities of the site itself, so it's gonna be May fifteenth. And, and I've included Jenny, our new natural resource person, so she'll also be there as well, so, and then I believe that's about it.
No comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And a couple other items, if we've got time, the disaster grant program, I'm still working on that contract, there, the insurance issue, we've still not gotten past that.
Was that the doc you're saying, that I keep getting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I keep getting them.
I'm, I'm getting concerned because of the timeframes here, we need to, this is a federal grant, federally funded grant, and we'll have to the end of May, if we can't get this solved pretty soon. I talked to the Commerce's Grant Manager this morning, and said I'll be talking to her in the next day or two, because if we can't solve this riddle with the insurance, we'll need to see if we can find another associate development organization nearby to be willing to pick these up, so we could make sure that those businesses.
Why, why are we now, I mean, have we never done this loan before, so we've never had to worry about this insurance?
It's the insurance provisions. According to her, this morning, the Department of Commerce has put those insurance clauses in there for some time, and I taught, I had sent her the insurance clause out of some of our previous grants, the Working Washington Two, for example, which is very brief and nonspecific, and...
Right, twenty-five counties have the same insurance company we have, so, I mean...
Right, so I don't know what they're, how they come up with this. She said they've been doing it for some time, the last grant we got from the Department of Commerce was our associate development organization grant, at least my department, and it was two sentences, as opposed to a page, a page of, you know, different coverages and amounts that are needed, I don't think it's so much the coverages and amounts, it's that naming Commerce and additionally insured, and making sure, so they recommend, recognize the risk pool, as opposed to an insurance company that's licensed to do business, how's that worded? I haven't provided.
They say there ain't a single county that uses an insurance company, not a single county in this state uses an insurance company, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it concerns me, and again, I'm, we're expecting an associate development here after the, you know, in July or August, and if they're putting that in there, we need to address this, yes, it's a problem at this point, but working on it. Just note that Substitute House Bill seventeen-eighty-three did pass, that's the, I believe it was a Department of Commerce request to fund the recruiting, hiring, and retaining of a grant writer for associate development organizations. I've not seen that, you know, I've not seen the details of that, but that apparently is gonna be coming, and I saw a note so far in a review of the, the operating budget, that this is one-time money, and I don't know how they expect to recruit somebody, and if they don't see how you're gonna fund them in the future, so that, more to come on that. Commerce will have until next July to, to put the program together, so that's something that's coming, so if, you might keep an ear out if your fellow Commissioners around the state are looking at that, or if WASAC or somebody else has some insights to what's happening there. Our associate development organization grant, we expect the same amount of funding as, as we've gotten the last few years, so that's seventy-five thousand a year for, for that, so. So, that's all on economic development.
Any questions for Steph? No?
Okay, then, how are we doing on time?
Yeah, five minutes or more.
Okay, on natural resources, Jennifer is busy working on the lead-in program, she call it, she came on board as that was just kicking off, it's a many-faceted program to get that grant process through, and she's doing an excellent job, in my opinion. We've got three projects in the process with grant applications, two are from the Yakima Nation, one from Columbia Land Trust, the Yakima Nation's proposing a floodplain restoration up and, up or end of the Clickatat, along the Howard Lake Hall Road, they're looking for, the ask on the surfboard is five-hundred thousand, it's a one-and-a-half million dollar project. The Yakima Nation also has a lower White Salmon River acquisition, that's an acquisition of both sides of the, the White Salmon River, from the former side of Condit Dam to the, to Highway fourteen, it's Pacific Horse Project, property, the tribe has a agreement with Pacific Horse, it's a, a right of first.
Offer.
Offer, yeah. So, that's, that's what we have from the tribe, that's a, also a five-hundred thousand ask, and they're putting together a, a larger funding package for that.
What CLT's project?
Columbia Land Trust's Upper Rattlesnake Habitat Enhancement. It's, it's the area below the falls, and just below DNR's property at the falls, and it's, you know, putting wood structures in there, trying to retain some of the water and the gravels, or get it blown out in that stream, so their, their ask is a hundred-and-fifty K, total project is a hundred-and-seventy-six. Your package this week or next, I believe it's this week, will have a grant amendment for our Switzer project, this grant amendment is just extending the end date from June thirty to the end of this year. During that time, we're going to be finalizing a revised scope of work and some initial funding on the budget, so that'll be coming, again, before the end of the year, you'll get that second amendment, I anticipate. I'm going to be putting in for your, for your consideration next week, a contract amendment, Aspec Consulting's the one that's doing the work on that, this also extends the end date of their contract from June thirty to the end of the year, coincide with the end of the grant. And there's a task order, so the task order type contract, so Task Order nineteen, the Board approves those task order amendments, so the task order will be amended as well to extend the end date.
Where are we at on well monitoring? Are we skipping here?
I think we're skipping the spring anyway, yeah, there's just too much going on. All right, well, thank you, perfect.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Yeah, and all. Okay, next up, two-twenty-nine, boy, we are kinda on schedule today. Veterans Advisory Board update. Do we have a Veterans Advisory Board? Do they have an update? As I say, come forward, I don't know that we've had official introductions for our new Commissioners. So let's do introductions and, uh, tell us what you're working on.
Okay, uh, as this year's chairman, I'm Bill Caldwell. I represent, uh, American Legion, uh, White Salmon American Legion Post eighty-seven. And-
I'm Jack Sutton. I'm representing the Post one sixteen, taking over from Brian.
And Frank Huey, I'm number at large for District Two.
And Cindy Furlong, she's not here.
She, uh, I talked to her. She's, she's just getting out of Vancouver right now, so she wasn't going to be able to make the meeting. She could come in.
And we have a new member here, Erin Quinn.
Oh, that's right.
And, uh, see, what district would she be? The number?
What?
Right, Jake's, uh, point D. So as chairman of the group, I guess I'll give a summary. Excuse me, I got a throat lozenge.
Yep.
Talk through that because I've been a little hoarse today. Uh, we met last Wednesday. And, uh, first of all, I want to make sure that we extend gratitude and thanks to both our support folks here. Uh, they do an outstanding job every year getting this organized and, and supported. So we appreciate leading the staff. Uh, we met Wednesday for about forty-five minutes or an hour. And, um, the updates, first of all, we have two new folks. We introduced ourselves and we went, the first order of business was we elected this year's officers. So I'm this year's chairman and then, uh, next year, well, the vice chairman this year would be Frank, right?
Yeah.
And then he, then he comes up chairman next year, yeah.
Lucky you.
Yeah, right.
I just came up with that. I guess I shouldn't have been at the meeting.
Yeah, you were missing on the mic there.
Now, uh, so we took it the order of business in terms of indigent vets, which is of course is our focus and, and our charter, uh, from the commissioners. Last year's activities, this past year's activities, since we met last, uh, we collectively, uh, probably had somewhere between six and eight encounters, if you want to call it that, for indigent vets. One of them, uh, we submitted a claim for, but unfortunately, uh, he was, didn't know, couldn't make up his mind if he lived in White Salmon or Hood River. He had a Hood River address on his application, so the audit, auditors rejected that application, uh, as per what the rules are. And the American Legion Post, we went on and absorbed that expense for him. Uh, that brought up an issue, which I'll get to in a minute, which we need to consider what sort of help indigent vets need. The other indigent vets that we had contact with typically needed, uh, gas cards. And both Goldendale and White Salmon Legion Post provided gas cards to those folks. Now, the question is, is that reimbursable or not from the county? We have asked the auditor's office to interpret the RCW on that because the RCW is fairly explicit, uh, on what's reimbursable, what's not. So there again, the, both posts have went on and absorbed that, uh, those particular costs until we adjudicate whether or not a gas card is reasonable to give an indigent vet in need to get the worker, get the hospital or whatever. That, to, to go back to the first vet I was talking about, his need, he's homeless and living out of his car. But he had a need for a, to pay for rent on a rental unit. Because that's where he keeps his tools when he is able to work. Now, to us, that was sort of a legitimate issue. Whether or not that's reimbursable, the auditor's office said no. His application was rejected anyway because of other issues. But that's a future situation we may encounter. Is a rental space because the individual needs, that's where his, maybe he lives in his car, but that's where his, all his, basically, is all his possessions lie. Is that reimbursable or not? We don't know. That's something to consider. So that, in summary, is, have been our encounters, uh, this past year. A little more than the COVID years, but still, when you look at it, uh, not that many. And, and that's a good sign. We just haven't run into anybody more than just a few folks that really were so-called indigent, need help or otherwise couldn't get addressed by other resources. Uh, one of them, of course, being the, or the VSO that's the county employs, Frank, uh, Gallagher. On behalf of the, of the Veterans Advisory Board, I, I met with Frank a while back. And we had a good meeting and, and agreed to support each other mutually as the resources and our policies allow. So we have a good, uh, good relationship there. So that's a quick summary. Frank, you might have something to add?
I'm just, um, I think, you know, we get the word out, I guess, maybe looking for some direction from the board on maybe how we get the information out or get more information out to vets.
That's the question I was going to have is the amount of people I run into that don't even know we have a VSO. Uh, it's astonishing. I was doing a senior, uh, board update and they had no idea. And so give them all the information and then they can put it in the senior newsletter and ship it out. But not everybody gets a senior newsletter. So it's, how do we, how do we get the public? I mean, we're looking for ideas. How do we get the public engaged? And then your concerns with, uh, what is covered and what isn't. I never even thought about things like that being considered gift to public funds uh, in being unlawful by state law for gas cards and whatever. So we're going to have to get some legal opinions from the prosecutor on what's a go and what's not a go, uh, where we can help and where we can't help. Well, I know, but it's legal review from, we're going to have to, I'm sure the auditor's doing it. But we need guidance so we can give them guidance, um, on where to go from here. Because to me, that's kind of the same thing, education. I mean, if you can get newspaper, radio, um, whatever, but we're going to have to check and make sure that that's an allowable use of suspended funds too, so. That's the biggest concern to me is getting the word out.
And I wish we've had, as I know Cindy, uh, was trying to get some emergency meds for one vet. And, uh, the hospital wouldn't take our check. Um, so she was trying to work something out where that wasn't an issue in the future if it came up. But because there was no account set up, they wouldn't accept the check from us. Even though it was the county check. It was weird.
Interesting.
Cindy's trying to work with them to try to set something up so something like this doesn't happen in the future. But it's something that we might have to look at, especially when we're trying to deal with a veteran. If we can't get, get the funds to him to get things done, you know, becomes an issue.
Well, hopefully-
Ended up running it through the Louis Liddell account to get, to get the meds for him.
Oh, that works. Yeah, hopefully you guys can work, uh, work with the auditor and kind of get a, a list of what, what you can do, what you can do. She'll just have to get a prosecutor request to get that through there. But yeah, biggest thing to me is education. I mean, we don't educate, people fall through the cracks, simple as that.
Fall through the cracks every day, even with education, but.
It's crazy, but everybody looks at those community sites online, everything Goldendale, Yowzport, Page.
Yeah, but they talk about it on there and nobody has any idea.
Well, e- even veterans that come to the Legion, there's so many that don't, don't realize they even have stuff available to them, but they've never even applied for it. And unfortunately, a lot of it isn't available to them until they do apply for it, you know, so.
Personally, I just think that part of that there is, uh, as a veteran, you don't want to ask for help.
Yeah.
Uh, and so getting that word out there and making it accessible and making it, you know, understand that they earned that. And so I may, and, you know, I'll talk to the chairman when we go out here, but maybe I'll, I'll work with the auditor's office, see if we can update the page to include contact information for us on their webpage under the VSO's, per view there. And not have something separate, but at least have it there and available and work with them, so.
By the way, this is Erin Quinn, she's our-
Was that Erin? Hi, Erin. Nice to meet you.
If you have anything to add, Erin, please jump in. I know you're brand new and everything, but feel free to engage. Regarding getting the word out, it's common knowledge among most veterans, or should be, if they contact the VA, the Veterans Administration, almost always the VA will direct them through VSO because that's how most of the administrative-
If there is a VSO, that's the problem.
Our county has one and all. And, and if a county doesn't have a VSO, then there's regional VSOs. But the VA is, the VA, we usually, the first thing they'll do, the first thing they'll do is say, hey, where's your VSO? You have one or whatever. Now, that doesn't mean an indigent vet has never contacted the VA. They don't know anything, that's true.
We did lobby the state, we did lobby the state this year through WASAC, Washington State Association of County, to supply more funding so the counties that don't have VSOs can get one. Yeah, unfortunately, that didn't go so well. Which you wouldn't think that would be a hard bill, but apparently it is.
I think sadly, you know, if you're working with people that are indigent, um, they usually don't have access to Facebook or whatever else. And so you're in that hard position that most of this is word of mouth. And it's word of mouth with the family members and the people who know them and their neighbors. And that's about the only way to get them because there's not a high likelihood that they're reading the newspaper, seeing the ads. And so, yeah, you're, thankfully, we've got all of you and you're all tied into your communities. And that's, it's just, I mean, I'm glad there's only seven, um, rather than, you know, twenty-five hundred that are having the issue. But I know there's a bunch that are falling through the cracks and we just need to find them and get them the help.
Well, I think our biggest problem is, I think it was Jackaloo too, uh, is a lot of veterans are aware of the VA and the VSO. But I know one personally, they just don't want the help, they won't ask for it. And they only do it when they're actually desperate. And we've had this discussion before last year with folks, uh, most of them, their biggest issues are mental health issues and drug-dependent issues. And those are, those are anchors that are all around their feet that, uh, cause a lot of problems that-
I know, I know, to, as, uh, up until a couple of years ago, when I actually got convinced to go talk to a VSO, I paid my own way, just paid my own bill, paid, paid for my own medical coverage, everything. And by chance, another veteran said, go in and see the VSO. And now I have coverage, which for thirty years, I didn't even know was available to me, you know?
And on the behavioral health side, and have you met Erin Quinn? She's, she's working on it?
Our current mental health expert until she can find somebody to replace her.
Funny, I need that. We're really busy. I'll introduce you to one.
Uh, yes, Madam Clerk?
I have another connection.
Okay.
Jack is married to Cindy, who's Honor Lord Health. So we're like all the family.
We're a big giant, public family apparently, okay?
She knew about the appointment before I did.
Okay, um, anything else you guys have for us or anything the board has for them? No, keep, keep up the good work. We'll keep educating people, throwing them your way and, um, keep doing what you can. And please keep us advised if there's anything we can help you with.
Well, we, I think collectively, I can say we definitely appreciate your support and the support you give the veterans, uh, in this county. We might be looking to you to maybe adjudicate some of these issues and what's reimbursable and what's not. The future to tell them.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm real curious, um, I think it's a good idea for you guys to sit down and like list out what each thing is you've ever been asked for the last ten years. And let's put them through an opinion request with the prosecutor and have him check the boxes on what's, what's good and what's not. So that you guys know right off the bat whether you're, you're going to have something that's covered or not.
Thank you for all, everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God, we are killing the schedule today.
You're worried about having enough time.
Well, yeah, well, if we put this morning into this afternoon, we'd have had a problem this afternoon.
Still got time.
Forty-five, final review of the Clickitac County Carter Shoulder Project Comment Packet to be submitted to FSSEC, um, Site Evaluation Council. Staff is in the room, I'm sure if we have any questions. I've looked over the packet, I, I thought it was very well put together for the short period of time that we had to put it together. I'm sure we will have far more comments as we go through this fun process. Did you guys have any comments or concerns before we submit that? No?
I thought it was good.
Okay.
Lot of work.
Um, I was originally thinking about taking a paper copy of that, handing it to FSSEC this evening in their meeting. But, uh, the more I think about it, maybe it's just a smart idea to sign it and have staff email it over and, uh, not have to lug that around this afternoon. So, yeah, that would have been my recommendation is we just sign that document and, uh, submit it to FSSEC. And if you guys don't have any comment, you're just going to have my day flying right along.
I would just like to say, um, sometimes we ask a lot of our department heads. Sometimes we ask a lot more than a lot. And I would like to say thank you to all of the department heads who put this as a priority and whipped this out and did it in such a professional manner. Um, I read it and I was like, this is perfect. I hope this works. Um, I will do everything I can to support, um, what you put down in my own comments later this evening. Um, and just again, thank you for everything from all those of you that worked on this. It just goes to show, you know, we're a pretty lean county. And when we put our minds to it, you guys do amazing work. So thank you again.
Yeah, I would echo that to all of the departments and all of the electeds and all of their staff that worked on this. Yeah, I was, I was impressed of what can be done in such a, uh, short, uh, period of time when everybody focuses, so.
Yeah, I was really pleased that individually you just picked it up and we're responsible and, and moved with it in that short timeframe.
And to me, I think it's twofold. Number one, we didn't really see anything that had to be edited, which is kudos because we like to edit things. So, yeah, no, that was a, that was, that was impressive. Okay, well, if we're moving on, um-
Has my seatmates, have you drafted speaking points or are you going to be speaking? And do we want to share those amongst ourselves so that we're on the same page and at least, you know, walk in that, toe in that same line?
My speech is over here buried by my phone. I don't know that I want to share that publicly now. I'm going to share that publicly with, uh, this evening.
Okay, it's just, just a question.
It's essentially the same thing I told you I would be speaking on is essentially all of it in a nutshell, since this is not hearing.
Well, and since we may have a short timeframe, there's a couple of versions.
See, mine is, mine is scheduled at two minutes. Um, just hoping that I get two minutes. I'm hoping they don't tell everybody one minute. And if they do, I might ask for special privilege to have two. Not that I'm special, but, um, I'm hoping they allow. If they don't, they'll get one minute and they get turned in and, um, we'll go from there. I, I honestly, I'm curious how many people show up and how many people don't get to testify. So I would certainly hope everybody has it printed so they can drop it off at the door when they leave. Because I think the majority of the people are not going to get to speak. But that's my opinion, based on their short timeframe of having here for the meeting.
Do we have, uh, that printed off so we have to sign? Is that in here? Okay.
Yep. Oh, we have a hand, sorry. Uh, you're going to have to come forward to the microphone so everybody on Zoom land can hear you. And then you have to tell everybody who you are and what you do. Otherwise, they yell at me because they don't know.
Okay.
Sorry.
Lynn Ward, Director of the Building Department. Are we attending tonight, are requested to attend tonight as directors? Or are we there on our own? I just want to make sure I'm going in the right capacity.
Oh, good question. I, I personally don't think we should, um, require our directors to go testify to FSSEC because if they would like to go testify on their own personal capacity, even if that goes against the wishes of, how the board feels on the issue, they should be allowed. And we should not take their free speech away from them, however they feel on the issue. So I would not make them testify for us at that time, but that's just me.
Okay, I just didn't know if you wanted us to go or if you didn't care. Okay, I just didn't know if he wanted us to go or if he didn't care.
I guess the one questionnaire to have is, is, you know, there's the 4:30 open house where they should be having some informational things. We may want the director who wants to go and take a look at that in your official capacities because that may help when we go for the next process and the next part of it. So, but I don't think that needs to be mandatory.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I don't have a problem if you want to go learn about it during their one hour open house. And then if you want to stick around for public testimony and testimony, testify as a resident of Goldendale, for or against, I will not hold it against any of you.
All right, it's a new thing, so I wanted to make sure we were.
Learning is always good.
All right, thank you.
A new thing that I wish we didn't have to deal with, but yeah.
Good questions.
A great questions, actually, questions I haven't thought of. Any other questions from the room on that one? Staff members? No, not seeing it. Okay. All right, well, we have that draft document before us and I'm sure we will sign it before we leave the room and.
Do we want to make a motion? Or just?
Motion to accept, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I don't mind. I mean, it puts us all on the record, so I'm always fine with being on the record.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the acceptance and concurrence by the Clicktack Board of County Commissioners for the staff project comments on the Caranger Solar Project.
And I will second.
Hey, we have a motion to accept it to approve the staff comments. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving staff comments and submission to EFSEC, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Once again, thank you, everyone online that's not in the room. Thank Moshi for all of her hard work. I think here soon, we're going to not be able to thank you enough for all the projects we've put on your plate. I'll take a second to thank Jeff for being able to submit his comments last minute that he didn't even know about it. So I appreciate that as well. And everybody else online that's not in here. Can't say thank Lynn because she went on vacation. Didn't invite me. All righty, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all 13 items.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with 13 items. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with 13 items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I would just make one note that we're going to have some sort of a signing of the CFA, you know, for a picture, a photo op or something down in, I don't know when we're going to have it. They're still talking about it, but.
For everybody on the Zoom land that doesn't know what you're talking about, you're talking about the bridge.
Commission, joint bridge commission. Agreement.
Yep, okay.
And so, you know, it's, we won't actually be signing anything. It's just a photo op, so just.
I won't, oh, so we were going?
You want, but I don't think it was, it wasn't requested. It was just kind of the by-state working group.
That's what I thought. That's why you said you will have a, and I'm like, wait a minute. Okay, if I need to go, let me know. And if I don't need to go, you can handle it.
I will let you know.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the count payable warrants in the amount of $1,019,742.31 and payroll benefits and warrants in the amount of $1,107,843.62 for the date ending April 24th, 2023.
All right, well, second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye. 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 That's a big packet. That's a big packet. They just screwed the pooch.
I don't know if that's appropriate to say in public.
Well, I am not statesmanlike. We all know that.
I'm just giving you a hard time, sir.
I know. Say if the people wanted a politician, they should have voted somebody other than me. Okay, just make sure I wouldn't. All right. Any other issues for the board, board pending before we move on to executives? And more talks about.
I don't.
Landfill contract stuff.
Don't believe so, let me.
Okay, I do, I do have a question that I'm going to break protocol again, since I tend to do that as a chairman prerogative. Hit me with your switch. Are you hitting me with your switch?
It was a pencil.
Okay. I'm hoping you can give us an update on how your tour went today. Did anybody show up to that or do you know? And you don't know anything? Okay. I'm sure we'll find out later, but. Well, I hope EFSEC shows up because I'm not even sure they're going to show up. Well, I hope they even show up to our meeting. And it's not just two of them and the rest are on Zoom. So we'll, we'll see. I, I'm, that's speculating, sorry. I'm, I'm, I have no, she's going to hit me.
The rumor will be false.
She's harmless.
Don't tell him.
She scares me. She's got a switch over here with my name on it. Okay, no, I just, that would have been, I might ask them when we get there because it would get in information to take others in there. So, okay, anything else that the board needs before we convene into executive session?
I read off the bottom.
Yep.
Section.
I think there's more to it than that. We are going to go into executive session. Normally, when we go into executive session, we come out and adjourn the, the, the meeting and take no further action and what have you. But on this one, we are going to reopen the meeting and have probably some more just public discussion. So if you want to like check out and then check back in, how long do you figure the executive, 15 minutes? Well, I, I don't want anybody popping back on because they're not going to be aware of our extensions. So we need to kind of pick a number and try to stick to it if, or as close to possible. So, yeah, we'll go with 15 minutes. There might be a five-minute extension. So if you come back in 15 and we're not on, try again five minutes later. And then once we come on, we'll give you a second to reestablish yourself in the Zoom. Other than that, do you want to make a note that the Board of County Commissioners will be attending the EFSEC Energy Site Facility Evaluation Council, open house tonight from 4:30 to 5:30. And then they have a public meeting regarding the Caranger Solar Project from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Goldendale Grange, located at 2280 Starland, Goldendale, and that will be tonight. Also noting that the Senior Services Department has invited the Board of County Commissioners to attend their volley, volunteer appreciation lunch on Friday, the 25th, in this building downstairs conference room. Oh, sorry, I have 28th written here. Yeah, sorry, I have my dyslexia. And then there was something else I wanted to address that we may be more than one commissioner going to. But I can't think of what it was. Well, I have a little meeting here tonight.
Did you have the tour of the treatment plant?
No, that's what it is, tour of the treatment plant. Both commissioners, Christopher and Anderson will be meeting with the Dallas Port Community. Well, if they, they, they requested a meeting, let's just go that way, to do a tour of the Dallas Port Wastewater Center, which is at 10:30 tomorrow in Dallas Park. And that'll be given by PUD and Public Works. So we won't be conducting any business. We are just there to look at dirty water. Let's put it that way. With that, we will be going into executive session. Again, with accordance of RCW 42.30.110 print I, print D, to review negotiations and performance of a publicly bid contract when public knowledge regarding such consideration could cause the likelihood of increased costs. And this is landfill contract. So.
Could you please ask if you can to leave?
Oh. That's true. So we will ask everybody online to remove yourself from Zoom.
You know what, this time, what we could do, why don't we just mute it and shut the video down so that they can still stay on there? That way they can just wait.
It's totally up to you, right?
I'm fine with that. It's a very big risk that if we do it wrong and they're hearing us, we have a problem, but.
We can see if we're talking or not.
Yeah, I'd agree. Yeah. So, yeah, I'd close the camera, close the mic. Yep, talking again. I see a mic moving, so I'm assuming we're good. All right, we continued our executive, or we didn't continue. We did our executive for 15 minutes. And then stopped and brought staff in the room. And so we've done nothing since executive. We are now going to go back into our regular afternoon meeting of the Clicktack County Board of Commissioners in open discussions on the request from Republic Services to discount the Skagit County rate of $1.50. Does anybody want to start?
Feel free, Chair.
Feel free. I believe what we should all do at this point, since we are in open session at this point, I do want to give guidance to Republic on where we all are currently standing. But that needs to be done in open. If we're actually making a decision, it needs to be in open session. So that's what this is. With that, it would be my feeling at this point in time to not give a rate decrease until I've been able to get more information from Skagit County and do more research into this. Yeah, I'll leave it short and sweet because I don't want to interfere with anything that was discussed in executive.
And I agree. I'd like to have more information from Skagit County before I make a decision.
I, of course, agree that we need to have all of the necessary information before we make large decisions that impact the county budget. And I also think that in order to move forward with what we've heard so far, I would make the recommendation that one commissioner does everything possible to try to make the meeting in person tomorrow to speak for the commissioners on our history of working together with the counties and our 30-year commitment towards one another. And, and try to build, start beginning to build that goodwill. I would also say that we need to start making a game plan of talking and who and how we're going to address the other mayors and the other electeds in the county that have decision-making that are, are, are equals.
In their county.
In their county. And that right now, until we get more information, I think the best thing we can do is work on those relationships and.
Right, and I believe I guess one thing I want to add is, is we do not have a contract with Skagit County. We have a contract with Republic. So if we give a discount, it would be to Republic and then Republic would be giving a discount to Skagit. I want to make sure that if we do go up there that we, we mention to them the, the relationship, the good relationship, the continued relationship, the damage it would cause if they changed their mind and went somewhere else, exporting their jobs, our jobs to a different state. But also make sure we bring up that if they're going to truck, if Waste Management is going to truck garbage to Seattle, they're actually going to be increasing the climate change that they so drastically complain about. And so I have meetings tomorrow. I will be able to attend this on Zoom if somebody provides me the link. Hopefully Steve Gilmore can provide me the link. I have a meeting at 2:30, so I'll be on it before then and on after then. I think the easiest way for us to get to Skagit County is Commissioner Anderson, if he's willing, to fly his plane up there. It's just, nothing against Ms. Zoller, but Mr. Anderson is more knowledgeable on the top, knowledgeable on the topic at this current time. Even though Lori seems to be my backup landfill person, if she's open to that, I will, I will leave it up to her on, on that one, I guess.
Yeah, we're, we have a lot of meetings and it's a busy time and that's a long, long ways. So that does help with our schedules if that can work.
Okay. You have a bridge meeting, Mr. Anderson? Is there a way Lori can take that bridge meeting from, or mental health?
I've got a mental health meeting. I'm trying to see if it's in person and I'm trying to see if we can get it switched to the morning. If not, Lori can sit in for me on that one. I won't be able to do, unless the winds change, I won't be able to do the tour in Dallas Park and get up there by 2:30 or by 2:00.
Okay, forgot about that, too.
I might be able to do the first meet and greet and then shoot from there for tomorrow at 10:30 because I could do that likely. I'll, we'll figure that out in the morning. We've already.
Do what you got to do to get to Skagit.
That's the most important.
That's the most important thing. Like I said, I wish I could go, but I have full faith and effort that each commissioner would represent Clicktack County in this matter. Because after all, it is a budget matter. And I think no matter who of the three goes, they will all be fighting to retain funding for our budget, so.
So I guess I see that Steve and Jeff are online. Can you get us the Zoom link as well as the personal or the, the actual physical location so I can try to get there?
Yeah, we'll get to that information here shortly. And we, we just want to say we appreciate your support and we encourage you to, to do this. So we, you know, we're both vested in this together, so I appreciate that. Right, we will, we will be active on this. Let's just put it that way. We currently have some phone calls in the commissioners over there. I think each board member is going to be a little hands-on on this project and, and see what we can get or see what we can do and we'll have future discussions next Tuesday, I'm sure. Great, thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order before we sign the rest of our documents before we send head over to the EFSEC meeting that we'll be at all night?
I'm just wondering if. Mr. Gilmore, would you get in touch with me after the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. After this meeting, not tomorrow's meeting.
Do you want a timeframe to have him call you? You're done signing? You're ready to?
No, I'm done.
Okay, so whenever we're closed for this meeting, you're ready to roll on a phone call. Got it. I don't have anything other than signing documents. Okay, with that, if there's no, no, staff doesn't need anything from us. Have any questions, any, anything for the good of the order? Anybody, elected officials online, have anything for the good of the order? Seeing none. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, noting that we have no scheduled workshops for Thursday, April 27th, and that.
that we have no scheduled workshops for Thursday, April 27th, and that we have multiple events where two commissioners will potentially be present, and that has already been noted in the record.
Okay. Does staff think we need to note those again in the record since we're Appreciation Volunteer Lunch and the Dallas Port Wastewater Tour that now it sounds like probably won't, but
And Caranger.
And Caranger tonight, yeah.
Oh, there you go. It's noted again.
Let it be noted that the commissioners have no time off. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion, second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of journeying, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for our interesting day today.
It's not over.
Not over.